Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to a study session of the Board of Directors of the Coachella Valley Water District. To take up one item. We do have President Powell, who will be participating remotely unless he can't chair the meeting from Indian Wells. President Powell, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you just great. Have you heard the announcements and things going on here this morning?
I just heard the last fifteen seconds.
Perfect, perfect. That's where we're at. So with that, I'd like to ask you to rise and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all. Thank you very much. We'll have the roll call.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada is on his way and I will not take the his time of arrival for the record. Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you, we do have quorum.
Great, thank you so much. We will, this is just an informational meeting, so we won't be taking any votes either in person or individually. So with that, this is the time set aside for public comment. Members of the public may comment on any matter appearing on the agenda. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the board is prohibited from taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Please address the board at the podium and limit your remarks to three minutes if you wish to state your name and address for the record. Do we have any in-person comments? Looks like no. Do we have any online comments?
No, we do not. And Director Estrada has arrived.
I went to the wrong building.
Okay, great. Vice President Estrada, we're through the agenda, through the public comment, and we've had none, so you can take it on item number four.
Okay, um, thank you, sorry about the timing. So moving on to item number four, I think we're ready for the, for the update.
Okay. Okay. Good morning, my name's Adam McWay, Conservation Manager. For the past several months, we've been working to update the district's landscape and irrigation design criteria ordinance. That was last updated in 2020. Real quick, I can go over the agenda for this presentation, so gonna go over real quickly why the update, what brought us here. Kind of high-level overview of those updates, and then a quick background of kind of outreach that we have completed to date. So, why now? So, um, the district's ordinance was first adopted back in 2007. It was a collaborative effort with the community landscapers, irrigation designers, local agencies to develop something that met the unique needs of the Coachella Valley. As I mentioned, the current version was most recently updated July 2020. Since 2015, through state executive orders and regulations, the state has required all local agencies to adopt an ordinance that is at least as effective as the state's Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance or MLLO. And so in 2015, we collaborated kind of across the valley to work with all the local agencies to adopt the same ordinance. And that was the district's ordinance back, so that was regionally done back in 2015. The state also tasked DWR to kind of reevaluate the effectiveness of MLLO. And that kind of led to the creation of the Landscape Statewide Advisory Group, which was formed in 2016. And they've kind of had a couple rounds of updates or evaluations. So the first round was completed back in '21. And that resulted in the MLLO Guidebook, kind of to address implementation challenges. And then the recent update was completed in '24, and they focused on interpretations and applicability. So, um, this, the LSAG group really focused on all the terms and can, terms and definitions, so to try to refine them and make them consistent across the state. And so that's why this update that we're proposing, a lot of the proposed updates are focused in that definition section to align with MLLO, just so that we're all saying and meaning the same thing. That state's update went into effect back in January 2nd, 2025. So, as I mentioned, the bulk of the updates are within the definition section, so fifty-three updates in all. Whether that be to the term or the definition. There are slight changes or differences with MLLO specifically that we've, we're trying to be a little proactive and include a definition for functional and non-functional turf to kind of try to get ahead a little bit of AB 1572. I'll talk a little more in-depth about that in a few more slides.
So why would we want to do that? Why would we want to get ahead on a bill that may or may not pass?
Well, it's already passed and been signed. We just want to get ahead in terms of the new development. So we're proposing to incorporate it into the landscape ordinance. So, we don't review and approve a landscape plan right now that has non-functional turf. And then by the time it's built in a year or two, it's no longer able to be irrigated by the property owner.
So, if you were in the process and you had your plans approved, and during that timeframe, in the middle of that, your, your, this new, you know, situation went into, to an effect, would, would they make you redo it?
Uh, they'll just, there'll be the prohibition on the irrigating of it with potable water.
So what do you mean?
So.
What does that mean?
AB 1572 prohibits the irrigation of non-functional turf with potable water. And that's being phased in over the next several years, so it first impacts properties owned by local agencies. And that goes into effect January 1, '27, and then it impacts commercial properties '28, and then HOAs in 2029.
So what my, my question is, is in, if you already have your plans approved, and before the 2027 date, okay? Would, would you have to redo your plans? Or is it for new plans that are after this goes into effect?
So, you don't have to redo the plans, but what will, what will happen? So the other requirement of AB 1572 is us as the water provider have to adopt something by that January 1, 2027 deadline to prohibit the irrigation of non-functional turf.
So it kind of sounds like although their plans might be approved, they themselves might not want to install the improvements, knowing that we would probably prohibit them from irrigating that area, right? So it, it almost sounds like it would be beneficial to them to not implement those approved plans, because.
Right, because it could be.
Because in six months, you're going to have a state regulation that says you can't irrigate that non-functional turf with this non-potable water. So you have to go back.
Potable water.
I mean, potable, yeah, I meant potable. So you have to go back and change that, and so it'll cost the, it'll cost a developer.
Yeah, by that time, by that time, you, you would have, you know, you probably put an irrigation meter, put all the irrigation.
Exactly.
For that, and then you're not going to be able to use it.
No, no, but.
Not use it.
If your plans were approved before we start the ordering ordinance, right? So, right, then you would be, you would be grandfathered in.
I, I think, I see what you're saying.
You would already be grandfathered in.
So, but the, but the, the law says, under this AB 1572, right? Says that you cannot use potable water on non-functional turf, which means that in spite of the fact that you have an approved plan, you have an installation, those people who are in that situation are going to have to stop watering that non-functional turf or, or put in a new landscape.
So it's actually even worse for, for existing users?
Right.
Right?
I don't, I don't think so. I think that there's, there's, if you're approved, I think I bet you that you're, you're.
Yeah, because the, because, because the better, yeah, because the question would be, aside from any new potential user, and we probably have existing users that fall under a situation where they're irrigating non-turf, non-functional turf, are we then preparing ourselves to say, we're going to deactivate that meter?
No.
Is that what we would, is that what we would do?
We would.
I think you're grandfathered in.
No, there's no, because it's just across the board, there's, uh, there's going to be a pro, there will be a prohibition on the irrigation of non-functional turf with potable water, regardless of when it was installed or when it was approved. It's just, non-functional turf cannot be irrigated with.
Yeah, again, so the question of, there's an existing customer who's been irrigating that piece of property for the last five decades.
Fifty years.
Fifty years.
But not for your house.
It does not apply to residential.
It does not apply for your house, but it implies to new constructions of new homes.
No.
No.
No. It's specific to public agi, agencies, commercial, industrial, institutional, and HOAs, public.
Doesn't it also say properties of a greater size than five thousand?
Greater than five thousand square feet.
So that may be residential. I don't, we don't, we'll have to.
I don't believe so, but.
For, oh, for reporting.
Yeah, but the question still, I mean, if that's, like, we would, we would, we would, we would take action to say.
And I think that's what we'll be working on next over the course of the next year to bring to the board for approval in ordinance or an update to the regulations, whichever is the best route to go in how we will enforce it. But the state provides the authority to impose fines, what that structure is. But, yeah, yeah.
So, so nobody is grandfathered in. You know, it applies to commercial, industrial, institutional properties. It doesn't apply to residential. It will include HOAs. You know, I think we've.
So, so what I'm trying to say, so if someone's, someone's putting in a building, a commercial building.
Today.
Today, and they have their plans submitted, they have their landscape plans approved, they have everything. They're just building. Usually, the landscape is the last thing to go in.
Right.
And they happen to start finishing the landscape in January or February or March of 2027. Would they have to redo the whole thing?
Yes.
Are you sure?
They won't have to redo it.
They would, they would have to, they would have to stop irrigating the non-functional turf.
They can leave the approved landscape, but it won't be irrigable. They can't water it. So they may want to consider something else.
And this isn't enforceable just by us. It's also enforceable by local municipalities. You could have, you know, the, the individual customers who have five thousand square feet or more are going to have to report to the state and indicate that they do not, they're not irrigating non-functional turf. And I think at HOAs, you're going to have a situation where you have, you know, differences among community members on, some people want to remove all the turf and some people don't want to remove anything. And so I think you're going to have a situation where people will be objecting to those reports with the state. And, you know, our role, what we see as our role with the HOAs is just going to be providing technical assistance to help them identify, you know, particularly inside the walls, outside the walls. I think it's easier to identify what might be non-functional. But on the inside of the walls, that's going to be up to the communities to, to determine what's non-functional.
So we're. How is this enforced? Can you explain to me how this would be enforced?
I think that'll be, I mean, somewhat contingent on what we, what the board approves kind of later next year and how we determine we're going to implement the prohibition. The state provides authority to issue the fines, similar to what we issued during the drought, when the non-functional turf first kind of came into play. And we were, had authority to issue fines up to five hundred dollars a day or an occurrence. But that'll be at the board's discretion, I believe, later.
Because.
Nobody's going to be happy with this.
The reason why he's saying that is because the state is not telling you that you have to find people. They're not, that is not part of MLLO. It's not part of that. So it's up to us to say, do we want to start that in the beginning, or do we want to see? I mean, I, I would like to, to not start that in the beginning and see what this leads to. Is there a big, huge problem out there where people are not following the law? Then that would be up to us to put some of these restrictions in, these fines in. But to start right from the beginning, I think, is the wrong thing, especially when that's not a state requirement. There's not a state requirement to find.
The state says that.
You have the ability.
That they can find, and the local public agencies have the ability.
Have the ability.
But are not required.
So the, yeah, so what AB 1572 is going to require is for the local water agencies to adopt something that prohibits the irrigation of non-functional turf with potable water. And then the expectation is that we enforce our ordinance or regulations.
So that's, that's an expectation, but is it a requirement? That, I think that's, that's to, to Anthony's point, which I think is probably a reasonable question.
Yeah, okay.
You know, where it's going to get interesting is, is the definition of functional. And if, if I were an HOA and I wanted to keep something tur, irrigated turf, I would just designate it as a community park, or a dog park, or a lawn bowling turf, or something that allows you to irrigate it, which seems pretty broad. And as long as it's, you know, being used for a variety of those purposes, then you'll be able to continue irrigating it.
Yeah, I, I don't, you know, we can still, we can look at the various ways we might be able to implement some type of prohibition as required by the state. But you all may recall, back in 2015, when the state told us we had to conserve thirty-six percent because we used more than anybody else. We actually were one of four agencies that got fined by the state because we didn't accomplish that goal. They subsequently adjusted it down, but we still got fined.
Yeah.
So I suspect that at some, there are ways, I get emails now from the state, from local residents who email the state that there is water waste going on. And then the state sends it to us and expects us to respond to correct that situation. And we go out and we deal with the situation and correct it. Now, if we didn't, and we continued to have complaints, I'm sure this would ratchet up on the state's, I don't know, list of bad boys.
Priorities.
And we wouldn't get any money from the state ever again.
But things have changed. One way, we have a plan. We have a, the, we have a whole basin plan that we're, that we're submitting to the state that shows them before we didn't have that. I mean, now we have requirements by the state that we have to have, that we have to be putting more water in than we're taking out over a certain amount of time, correct? And we're, we're doing that. So, you know, the, the odds of them coming and pointing the finger at us are, 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 why, why would they point the finger at us when there's only a few areas in the whole state of California that is even meeting their plan? Right? I mean, it was different back then. I mean, it was, we didn't have this whole plan. They didn't know our, our history. They just.
Twenty fifteen was like a year after Sigma was passed, and so there were, there was.
With the Sigma thing, we didn't have.
We had a water management plan in 2004. We updated it in 2010, and we've had a water management plan. But from a taste, from a state perspective, I mean, Sigma came in in fourteen, and they're, they're trying to come in and, you know, impose fines in fifteen during the drought. I, I think it was more of a broad brush, you know, approach to, to everything. But I do think even across, even across the Colorado River Basin, there is a push to irrigate no, you know, no non-functional turf, even with non-potable water. You know, Colorado River water that is, you know, non-potable. So, I mean, the state of Nevada, metropolitan, Arizona, has, you know, pretty much said, we are not irrigating non-functional turf with Colorado River water. Now, I still think it happens, and there's no enforcement, but, but, you know, there are commitments there for the water districts to, to move in that direction. The less water we pump means less water we have to replenish. And so if we can reduce the demands on the domestic water system, we can also reduce the demands that require replenishment.
I, I, I hear you, and I think that in the future, I just don't know how far, we're going to be right where you're talking about. I just think that the Coachella Valley, we've taken a different approach to where we, 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 we phase these things in, you know? A li, little by little, instead of shocking the whole community where we've got people roving and giving fines and all these things. I, I think we do what the state asks, and then if we have some constraints to where we need to start ratcheting down how much water people are using, then we have the authority to do it. But to do it, to go ahead of what the state asked for in the Coachella Valley, in an area where we're meeting our Sigma obligations, seems crazy to me.
I, I, uh, yeah, I'm kind of in the same spot. I, I think whatever we need to do is, obviously, we need to do like past the ordinance with whatever language the ordinance needs to have, and whatever components that, you know, we need to, you know, have on, on, on letter, on the paper. And, and it gives us all the legal authority to have enforcement if we choose to do so. But I don't, I don't, uh, at least for me, I don't feel like it's a, that big of a priority to try to go out in full force and, and make sure that we're policing everybody. I think that if there is a way where, where maybe someone else is taking that, that, that kind of lead role, whether it's the HOA or the cities themselves, and then we're just kind of responding to possible, you know, if, like, that to me makes sense, but to, for us to go out and even try to like, you know, compile the universe of who has functional turf and who doesn't have functional turf, and, and how are we going to start, you know, getting people in line? And like, that, that seems, at least to me, not to be a big priority. I think as Director Bianco said, in the big picture of, of everything that we're doing, it's probably being handled by Sigma. And it's being handled by bigger projects that probably should have our attention to meet those targets. I, I don't, I don't think that it's going to be through implementing something too crazy to try to meet, or even create something that we don't even know how it's going to play out, right?
Yeah, I understand that. I just want to clarify again, for the purpose of this ordinance and what we're looking, we're not talking about enforcing the prohibition or doing anything along those lines at this point. This is in the development phase, and we're adding this to the ordinance for transparency, just to make it clear. And it's in a further slide, but we want the developers in these landscape plans to specify what areas are special landscape areas, because those are going to be the functional turf areas, and to really be thoughtful and pick those out. Really, the focus here and why we decided to try to add this to the landscape ordinance was so we didn't have that result of where we approve a plan, and then when it's built and handed over to the HOA or property owner, they're no longer able to irrigate it.
I, I completely agree with that goal. I mean, when I'm, I'm reading the, the bill here, and it says the use of potable water for irrigation on non-functional turf on commercial, industrial, and institutional properties other than a cemetery and on property, properties of homeowners, associations, common interest developments, and community service organizations or similar entities is prohibited as of January 1, 2027. And if we approved a plan at, at December 31st, 2026, and they go into development of that plan, and by the middle of the year, it's finished, they start irrigating, and, and the state sends them a letter that says, you are, you know, from community groups, get a hold of the state, and the state says, hey, you have to stop irrigating. They're going to be upset with Coachella Valley Water District for not giving them a heads up about, you know, what their design should have been according to the state rules. So, so I think we need to balance, you know, that, that goal and objective with being a cop that is saying that, you know, you have to take out this non-functional turf, and, because we don't know that they're walking dogs on it or something, right? I think, I don't want to, I don't think we want to be the, the police, but we also want to be proactive in helping them meet those objectives.
I'm just wondering, um, if we're, if we're, you know, there was a nerdy comment by President Powell about how it does seem like it would be pretty easy to just define functional turf by saying it's functional turf, right? Oh, yeah, it is. We walk a dog on it, right? And so it's very broad, and, and so I wouldn't want to move too hard on making it less broad by now having folks submit plans that specify in the plans, this is non-functional turf, this is functional turf. And then kind of tie their hands on, because we're going to look at the plan and say, no, well, you said, you know, you said this was non-functional turf. And then it creates another issue where now they don't have the flexibility of saying, no, well, it's actually something different. Yeah, I'm just, um, in general, I'm just concerned of like the administrative burden that we're putting upon ourselves and trying to play by these, by, by these rules, and, you know, where, where, where do we draw the line? You know, how much, how much, how much of a priority we're going to put into this? You know, when we start nitpicking landscaping plans and, I, you know, I, I can just see it become a problem.
You know, I find it interesting that none of the comments that we got back from either the developer community or from C-VAG or from either two or three other groups that we reached out to kind of raised this issue.
And I'll, and I'll, and I'll tell you, I'll tell you why. I mean, the re, the reason why is, is that they trust this board. So, C-VAG trusts me that I had gone through this and that it's going to be okay for them. I, I don't think C-VAG had read this and went through this whole thing. The same thing with the builders. I believe that they're trusting John, John on that board, that whatever he decides is in the best interest of them. And so, you know, and the reason why I know that is because C-VAG told me this. Like, we, we assumed that you've gone through this, and you're giving your blessing on it. If you're giving your blessing on it, then we're okay with it. And I'm like, I haven't even seen it. This was before, I hadn't even seen this, and, and they're, and they're already approving it, thinking that I've already approved it. So I think that's a, and, and I know that we've done this before. You've brought these things to us, and you've said, and we've said as a board, have you, have you asked them for their input? So, you know, we're, we're.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
Yeah, no, it's chicken and egg.
Chicken and egg. I mean, it's, I, I, and I get, I get it why you guys did that. I'm not criticizing you that, but.
Can I speak to that?
On this, yes.
Okay, so we, you know, we, we did present this. I mean, first of all, Director Estrada, you mentioned the administrative burden. I mean, DWA just adopted a policy, a non-functional turf policy, where HOAs and CII customers are submitting, you know, to them what they believe is non-functional turf versus functional, and they're doing inspections. We're not planning on doing any of that. That's not what this meeting is about. That's not what this is about. This is just about the definition. But, you know, when we presented this to the Gulf and Water Task Force, they did have some changes that they requested, and we updated it. And I think that's a pretty broad definition up there that we have. We're not going to be determining within an HOA what is functional versus non-functional. That's their job. If we see, uh, you know, the, a two-feet patch of grass outside between the sidewalk and the, the street, that might be what we focus on, you know? That might be what we request, you know, the board to focus on when we bring this ordinance back. But I think that's a pretty broad definition, and it's, uh, you know, we added event spaces. If an HOA says that they use an event, an area as an event space, we're not going to question it. We're not, that's not going to be our job.
Yeah, I, I went back to the actual, the legislation, because I wanted, I wanted to know what your definitions for functional turf and non-functional turf. So I went back to fifteen bills, AB 1572, and your, your definitions here of functional and non-functional are verbatim, and then there's some additions in there which I think are, are beneficial to our homeowners' associations and, and event spaces here. So, I, I, I think this, you know, your definitions here, I think align with AB 1572 and give us, just a, just a small amount of additional. Uh, and give us, uh, just a, just a small amount of additional col- color to Coachella Valley and our service area. So I, I think these are really pretty good definitions in, in my estimation.
So my biggest thing is defines going above what, uh, the state is requiring, that I, I don't think we should be doing anything. I, I don't think we should be do- asking anything that's above what the state is, and my other thing is, is to, and I brought it up to you guys, is to, to define rehabilitation. What's rehabilitation, so, um, I understand the turf, I understand the turf, okay, no, no matter what, we're getting rid of. Of non-functional turf, period, no matter if you're a, a new building or an old building or whatever, that, that's going away. But there's also a lot of different things inside this besides turf, right? There's, there's different, uh, pressure, I mean, di- different things you have to use for, for, for different plants, I mean, there, there's a whole. Wide range of different things that the state is asking for, and my, and my, is what I'm asking for is, we need to define rehab. So if a business puts a new shop or something onto their business, and, uh, are they gonna have to redo everything?
Yep, so I can speak to that, so rehabilitated landscape, uh, is defined, um, it's actually, it's not one of the. Uh, definitions that we're proposing to update or change, um, typically, or, in summary, I guess it's if there's gonna be significant. Um, water use changes to the property, um, to be, it's only for like a, a building, a home. Office building, if it's, it's usually at the city's request, if the city is demanding that they submit plans to us, then we'll receive those plans and review them. Um, but for instance, our rebate programs, when customers remove turf and are converting from turf to desert. Uh, we receive landscape plans just to verify that they're meeting the terms of the rebate program, which is mostly to just verify the, um, plant canopy coverage. But we're not going back through and requiring formal landscape plans from an architect, designer, and recalculating all the water calcs because. That water use is going to be going down since it's converting from turf to something less, um, I think. Uh, with a lot of ADUs being built, accessory dwelling units, they're putting that over existing landscape, so the water use is. You know, they're gonna go down, we're not receiving, um, landscape plans for those or, or, uh, requiring landscape plans unless. Um, I mean, it's to the extent where they're demolishing the majority of the home and constructing something brand new, and the city. As I mentioned, requires that they resubmit to us.
I, so what you're, so what you're trying to say is, nothing triggers us unless the, the city. Requires a new landscape plan for whatever rehab they're doing.
Correct.
Okay, so, so what, what, what triggers these new provisions would be. If the, the city asks for a landscape plan for whatever add-on they're doing to their business.
Correct.
Okay.
I, um, I was just gonna say that, I was gonna say that, uh. My, my gut feeling is that. There's, there's probably not a lot of these. Non-functional turf areas that are very like obvious, like. And wherever they are located, they're probably small, and so your point, uh, Scott, about it being kind of the front, like. Whatever might be between the curb and the front of the sidewalk. You know, that's, that seems very easy to just convert into desert friendly landscape and there's programs for that, right, to do that. Um, so it seems like there's an approach to try to handle it. I, you know, I, I think about it and I just, it doesn't feel like there's a lot of. Areas that. I don't know, it's just my feeling, like I can't.
You know, there, there are, there are still some very obvious ones out there.
Like in the parkways or what, like?
Yeah, if you're in, for instance, South Palm Desert, there are several examples going up Portola or going up Highway seventy four. Where they don't have access to non-potable water and they're irrigating between the road and their sort of. The wall of, of their community or whatever it is, and a lot of those are still grass, I mean, tho- those are gonna have to change, I think. Cause there's no re- there's no real way to recreate in those areas.
Well, there's the, like, for example, there's the area right before you hit, uh, Cook Street, um, as you're traveling to Palm Desert. And but they have a lot of day, day trees there, part, uh, in between that turf, right, like that seems to be like a part.
And that's gonna be, that's gonna be, uh, a point in, in that are the trees being irrigated with the, uh, overspray or whatever? Are they supporting the, the tree health, which is a perfectly acceptable way of irrigating those trees?
Yeah, and so, some of that in Indian Wells is, is non-potable, I don't know exactly where which parts are and which are not, but some of them are.
Yeah, so, so, you know, to your comments, Akasalo, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about, you know, if these homeowners' associations. Uh, have, let's say, competing factions of what's functional and what's non-functional is, then does CVWD. Become the arbiter of, of that, and I guess in some fashion we will become that arbiter, and how, how are we gonna handle that? Like, but you have a group of people that's, you know, we, we don't use that, and other people say we do, right? And so, uh, you know, how will that work?
You're, you're right, I just, I just see, we, we just have to let it play out and see what happens, let it play out instead of just see what happens. I think the majority of the, 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 uh, the, uh, communities are going to do this, are going to rip out the, the glass. And maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's, we're gonna have a real big problem where they're all fighting this, I don't know, but.
The, the other question I have is.
I see a lot of them doing it already, yeah.
The other question I have is, who, who, who do you think has more jurisdiction on these issues, uh, between the agencies, like? Would, do the cities have more jurisdiction, or does the wat- does the water district have more jurisdiction, or is it equal jurisdiction? Um, I'm just trying to figure out in the case of, you know, who these complaints should be going to, is it? Is it us, or is it the council?
Yeah, I can.
You know, like, what, what's your feeling on that?
I can touch on that real quick, I wanna make one other point real quick, sorry, first, just that, um, these terms are somewhat new. But the concept isn't really new, so developers, architects are already familiar with, uh, when they submit their landscape plans, designating areas as special landscape areas. Which would be these functional turf areas, and they're doing so because those areas receive a higher water use calculation. So, um, that is something that's been going on for a while, that they are identifying, they're just, it's just that's functional turf, identified as functional turf now. Um, it is an update that we're also gonna have them specifying the plans as special landscape area, but it is something they've been doing for a long period of time. Um, directly to your question, A B fifteen seventy two speaks to that, um, in the sense I believe. It states that the cities do have the authority, but I think it directs them to work with the water agency if they do wanna impose fines, just to make sure they're not being double fined. That's my, I believe, but A B fifteen seventy two does speak to that to some extent, and did you have something else? Okay.
Cities are gonna do anything, I don't think they're gonna enforce anything, so it's probably gonna be a test.
I think so, dude.
I, I, I.
When it comes down to that, is it functional?
They're, they're, I don't think they're gonna do, not these cities.
Yeah, cause they're not, they're not running the calculations on the landscaping plans, right?
There are other cities that we're in, I, 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 I don't think they're going to, so, and we, you know, I just say, sit back and let's see what happens. I see a lot of people ripping out grass right now, all over, I mean, they've done a, a lot in La Quinta.
Oh, no doubt about it.
Oh my, a lot, a lot, yeah.
And, you know, Director Bianco, that's why we're not bringing back the non-functional turf ordinance, I mean, we. Like I said, Desert Water Agency has already brought it to their board, we're not planning on bringing it to the board until probably late next year. Because we don't feel like we're in a rush to do it, you know, we, I feel like we've, we did a good job during the drought. And because we did enforce it, and we got a lot of, lot of properties to remove, those obvious areas outside the wall, if you drive by Desert Falls. I mean, they removed, you know, tons of, of turf, so, I mean, just about everything outside the wall now.
I just, you know, we have to remember, we are not in the same situation as, uh, as, as Palm Springs, or even Desert Hot Springs, okay? Our Sigma footprint is a lot different than theirs, so, you know, we, we, whatever they do doesn't mean that we should follow suit.
And, and that's why we're not bringing it yet, and that's exactly why, I mean, you know, in two thousand and seven, there was, uh, the twenty by twenty percent by twenty twenty, and I know you're familiar with that. Director Nelson, you know, we were required to reduce our per capita water consumption by twenty percent by twenty twenty, and we reduced ours by thirty-six percent. So we're in a good shape, you know, under, under conservation as a way of life, it was great, and you were, I mean, you probably voted on all of those conservation efforts. Over the years.
Well, you know, we did, and, um, I will say, you know, I was at a Colorado River Board meeting, uh, yesterday, and, uh, we were looking at. And, um, outgoing General Manager, uh, Devin Appiquay was talking about over the last twenty years, what Metropolitan had done. In terms of reducing their, uh, water per capita, uh, and down to a hundred and fourteen gallons per person, uh, per day. And I think ours is significantly higher than that, but largely because, you know, we have a different climate here, and so that's a major factor. But when we start talking about in terms of, you know, what the water situation is on the Colorado River, which is a, you know, different than this. But in many ways has a parallel in that, wha- what is CVWD doing to, uh, impact their Colorado River water use? Uh, in similar ways that either Metropolitan has done, um, or, you know, across, across the basin. And so it comes into play in, you know, the four forty plan and, uh, those types of issues, but, but I, I will, I will commend the district. On doing such a great job in terms of, you know, replacing a lot of this turf from the twenty twenty, uh, I think. Your, the timeline is good, only do what the state is requiring, and, and, uh, I mean, it's pretty short fuse in terms of twenty twenty seven. But I, I think we're on the right track.
And, and, uh, thank you, Director Nelson, and I would just point out that, um, you know, we have conservation as a way of life, we have the water use efficiency regulations. That have come into play and we're required to reduce consumption by ten percent, at this point, our, our target is ten percent by twenty forty. And I think the way we get there is, you know, some of what we're doing now, I mean, I think that's how we're gonna get there, and we're gonna, we have this non-functional turf ban, I think. You know, that gets us there, and I don't think we have to do a, you know, we're doing everything we can to promote conservation, and, you know, I. But, you know, we're not gonna bring this back until late next year.
I mean, it's, it's, we're, we're on our way, I mean, every new home that's being built does not look like it used to be now, I mean, I mean, it is completely, the water use has changed. I mean, to me, it's, I mean, we've cut it in half. That's correct, we've cut it in half, I mean, or more, I mean, so, we're, we're, we're well on our way, I mean, they're still building homes here, they'll have a lot more built by twenty forty.
And, I mean, we've already started outreach, um, kind of with HOAs, just notifying them that this is coming, and they're gonna have to comply with it by twenty twenty nine. And part of that messaging to them is, um, they've been doing this already, as you mentioned, for a long time, they've identified areas of turf to convert and remove, and those areas that they identified. Obviously were non-functional, and that's why they should pick those areas to convert, so, um, I guess that the terms, language is new, but concept is, I don't know. Should we move on, next slide? Let's see if it's, okay, um, so yeah, so, so that section, the definitions section, um, as I mentioned. Those are primarily to align with the state, um, model ordinance, and to, so, we say and mean the same thing when, when we're talking about. Controllers or, uh, calculating total water use and things like that, um, when we, uh, started planning this update, we also wanted to take a. Holistic view at the ordinance, are there other sections we need to update, and that's kind of what these subsequent sections are gonna be. So, with respect to section zero point zero, zero point zero three zero, um, we just updated to reflect that our current practice, we now receive plans digitally. Rather than via paper over the counter, and we wanted to clarify some of the kinda terms and timelines around the Certificate of Completion, which is a document that the. Developer is supposed to complete at, once the project is finalized and built out, and then provide that to the city, us, and the, and the ho- owner, um.
So, should we, should you define in here what rehabilitated landscapes are? I mean, should we define that it's, that it's, that it only triggers, you know, a landscape plan submitted to CBWD and all this stuff? Only when it, it is required by the city?
Um, so it is defined, um, it's on page eleven, um, any re-landscaping project. And I believe.
So it's, it's not, it's not defined as being triggered by a city ordinance, it just says, any re-landscaping project. In which the choice of the new plant material or new irrigation system components is such that the calculation of the state's estimated water use will be significantly changed.
So, and then also in the very first section, um, part E one, the criteria shall apply to the following. So E one A states new construction and rehabilitated landscapes, um, for public agency projects and private development projects requiring a building or landscape permit, plan check or design review. E one. A. Uh, two, before the definitions.
That's before the definition, what page is that on?
Uh, page two. If they can.
On page two, wow, that's way up there.
Applicability.
There it is. Yeah, requiring a building or landscape permit, yeah.
On that, I would just like to mention that recently there was a golf course that was redone, and there was no. Like, it was, the whole golf course was being redone, and the, um, the city didn't require a building permit, and we didn't require a, a landscape plan. So, I mean, that's an example of exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, okay, that's good, I mean, we shouldn't.
What, what, we got complaints that we didn't.
Who, who, who would complain about that?
They're bringing up the ordinance, just.
Oh, okay, it was a, a resident who didn't agree with, uh, what was being done. And that was actually a comment from the Gulf and Water Task Force that we took into consideration that golf specific section to update that, it was kind of along those lines as well.
Is that the right section?
Yes, yeah.
No, I think you're, I think you're, you're telling us that it's, that it's not going to, I, I don't know if we actually need to define that or not in there. But you're telling me that it needs to be triggered by a, a city, you know. I mean, that. That, that's somebody, you know, deciding to change their landscape because they wanna go to less turf, isn't gonna have to submit plans. And do all this.
It would kill our rebate program if we did that.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, and. It would kill our lan- it would kill our, our rebate programs if we did that, and there's only, you know, two people approving landscape plans. We wouldn't have time to approve every, every residential project.
So, so why do they even have rehabilitated landscapes in there, why do we even have it in there?
You could have a cir- you could have a circumstance.
You could have a cir-, you could have a circumstance where somebody has a vacant, you know, it's an empty parcel. You know, there are a number of parcels out there that, you know, don't have, um, don't have anything on them. They have meters, a water meter, but maybe they just have a single family home, and it's five acres, and, you know, they could add some, you know, big, um, maybe they develop it for the first time, even though they had the water meter, so then the city would require that. Um, but there could be circumstan-, there are circumstances where that would be required, because there's a lot of properties out there with, with meters that, you know, even within HOAs, that, um, they have the meter just for purposes of keeping it landscaped, because that's an HOA requirement.
Got it.
So, there's, there's a lot of circumstances where that could happen.
Okay, okay.
Do we want to switch back to the PowerPoint?
Can we switch back to the PowerPoint? Thank you.
Okay, and, um, so yeah, again, uh, section B, so we're updating, just to be transparent, that, um, plans should identify, clearly identify those special landscape areas. I mean, they've already been doing that to an extent to, to receive that higher water calc when we're doing the, approving the plans. Um, and, but this is a section where we've kind of inserted that prohibition on new non-functional turf. Let's see, uh, we updated the non-potable water section. Um, this was just to align with ordinance fourteen forty point one, um, that was recently adopted by the board back in November twenty four. So we just wanted to ensure that this ordinance and that ordinance lined up, and...
Wait, wait, can you go back?
Yeah.
So, I, I have a, just a, an overall question about how these provisions, um, apply to, um, landscaping plans that include large water features. Um, ponds, lakes, you know?
Yeah.
It, it, are there new restrictions in here that relate to controlling the amount of either water that's used or specifying type of water used, or it's comparable use for irrigation? I mean, what is, how, how is that different, or has it not in fact been addressed?
Um, it's just impacted by the overall water calc. Do you want to speak to that, Julie?
You know, a lot, a lot of the, a lot of the lakes you see on golf courses are defined as reservoirs. So, you know, that, that's, that's, it's not just a body of water.
I know, I know, I know.
It's not a water feature, right?
Yeah, it, it, it's a functional use.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Julie Creutz. I am generally the person who reviews the plans. Um, the water features, the lakes, that's not really addressed in this update. It was addressed largely in the twenty twenty update. Um, Director, Director Bianco is correct. A lot of times those, especially golf courses, the lakes are the reservoir, and then they pump from the lake to irrigate in some areas. Um, as far as some new developments that are occurring, it depends on what they're going to use the lake, the water feature for.
How does this, how does the maximum applying water allowance, how is that determined in some kind of a recreational water feature?
So if it's considered recreational, in other words, it's going to be used for swimming, paddle boarding, surfing, um, then they get what the state has deemed as a special landscape area for recreational use. So they get a higher water factor for that.
And is that included in, in these changes?
It, it is not something that we're updating the definition for in these changes. It, that was actually addressed in, in the twenty twenty update.
So there's no need to update it to correlate to the state requirement?
It's not been changed in the current state definition.
Okay, well, that's good enough. Thank you.
So yeah, and that kind of goes back to, on this round of updates from the state, they were just focused on the definitions and terms. I think, um, it's been adopted into the state building code, so it gets updated every three years. And so the next update may focus, kind of start looking at kind of the, um, meat of the ordinance. And again, um, with respect to that, we may not, um, want to adopt exactly what the state does in their model ordinance with respect to those parts, um, since we have developed this locally. We're aligning here because it's most, it, all the state's updates are focused on those terms and definitions, and we just, um, thinks, think it makes most sense to say and mean the same thing when it comes to, um, landscape plans and whatnot, so.
So, so, so you just, you just got me off a little bit now. So, the M W E L is a plan that we have to do?
No, we're required to adopt an ordinance that is at least as effective as the state's model ordinance.
So that there's some leeway in there on what's effective and what's not effective?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, other provisions, uh, so water waste prevention is something that we're, um, proposing to include or update in the landscape ordinance. Uh, water waste has historically been in the landscape ordinance, but, uh, the violations and penalties were in a separate ordinance, ordinance fourteen twenty-two, which the board adopted in November twenty fifteen, and that was enforced through June of twenty twenty-one. Um, in June twenty twenty-one, the board adopted the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, which superseded, um, that water waste ordinance. And, um, the restriction in the Water Shortage Contingency Plan is that, um, financial penalties for water waste are only enforceable if we're in a stage two. In stage one, um, the penalty is education. Um, so we're just proposing to bring the water waste penalties back as a tool for staff um, to enforce those water waste violations when they occur, when we receive, um, notifications from the public, or we observe it. Uh, currently, we do, we are still observing and responding to those. We send the customers a letter, um, notifying them of the issue, and that, uh, there could possibly be these, these fines attached to it. But those aren't always as responded to. Sometimes we would not receive a response until they see the, the fine on their bill. Um, the, the penalty or revenue isn't really the issue, because even if they see that fine and then work with us, we'll remove it, um, as long as the issue is resolved. Um, it's just a tool available to staff to kind of stay on top of water waste, so.
It's the hammer.
Yeah.
So, so that, 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 this is the one that I won't be voting yes on for this, if we have this in here. Now, I think this whole, this, this is not a state requirement. Now, we may get to this in the future, because we see so many people violating the rule, but I don't think that in the beginning, this is where we need to start. I think this is, this is fines, and all this is, needs to be pulled out. So, and I think you've heard from a couple of other board members feeling the same way.
This, this, uh, this, um, but, but these fines exist somewhere else already?
Uh, they did. They existed in ordinance fourteen twenty-two. They also exist in the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. This mirrors the fining structure in the Water Shortage Plan, but, um, we only have the authority to issue those fines if we're in a stage two.
In a stage two?
Stage two.
And now this would supersede that, and you would be able to, you'd issue these fines right now?
Currently.
Whenever we thought that, uh, there was a concern?
Yes.
Sometimes this is, a fine is the only way to get somebody's attention. It doesn't have to be a big fine. But if, if we don't have some kind of hammer, we're, we may not be able to modify the behavior.
We, we can always go back and put this if it's a big deal. I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I don't want these, there, there is, there is a, a, a percentage of the population, and it's small, maybe less than one percent, that complains about everything, okay? That i- if you're not driving the speed limit, you should get pulled over. If you're not doing this, you, you know, it's like, a- and we just don't need that right now. I mean, I just think, it may get to this, Jim, like you're talking, that we need, that there's a, a, we, we drive around ourselves and we see it all over, but, you know, I, I just don't...
So I may have a little bit different take on this i- in terms of the water waste penalty provisions inside the ordinance for establishing landscape and irrigation design criteria. I think they should be separate. I think that we should take that issue up, uh, o- on its own. Uh, I think that the, this, this should be solely focused on what the, what the design and landscape, uh, resp- you know, system design is response to fifteen seventy-seven. The, the ordinances should be, I mean, it, it, it could be referenced here as, uh, you know, water waste with, uh, a potential, uh, penalties or, you know, violations. Go see ordinance X. But if I'm a, i- it's kind of like, what, what do you wanna, what do you wanna look at and chase down? If I'm, if I'm a designer, I'm gonna say, okay, this is, these, these penalties are for the operator. They, they have nothing to do with how I designed the system. And if you're, if you're issuing a, uh, a penalty, they're gonna say, they're, they're gonna say, well, what, what authority do you have to do that? And they'll, and you'll say, go look at this ordinance, and you'll have to look through the whole design ordinance to find out where the penalties are. And so I, I think that kind of better governance is that keep them separate and have a design ordinance and a penalty and water waste ordinance separately. Um, so I, I think we could take that, this up in a, in a different forum, in a different side, and kind of address, uh, Anthony's, uh, concerns about that, and, um, I, I would support that.
If I could, I, I, we can certainly do that. We can remove it from the water waste, or we can remove it from the landscape ordinance. And I mentioned to Director Bianco on the way in that we're actually doing an update of the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, which is required every five years. And I looked at the initial drafts and took the board's concerns during the last drought, when we were kind of forced to implement and move to stage two. So, uh, you know, one of the thoughts is that we could put it in there, and then the board could have a discussion about, about issuing fines at stage one at that point. Um, we could do that, but I, I do have some other recommendations on the Water Shortage Contingency Plan based on the board's, uh, input during the drought that I've already incorporated, um, to address some of those, some of your concerns when we were forced to do it. But maybe we could have the discussion at that point if that would be better, and I don't know what the timing is, but ma-, you know, if that's the case, then we could bring back the non-functional turf. Um, you know, whatever our ordinance is that we're required to, uh, adopt later this year or next year, um, and bring them back as a package, so there can be a whole discussion about it, if that would work better. And then we could do this clean without the water waste.
You, you remember that when we, when we went through all the stages, okay, we had stage two, three, four, okay? And we were told that stage two, if we were told that we had to go to stage two, that if there was a few things in that stage two that we approved, that we didn't like because of the circumstances of the time, that we could take out. And that wasn't the case. The state said, whatever you approved on stage two, you have to implement a hundred percent of it. And so that's what he's talking about, is we're gonna...
Yeah, we were thinking we had a range of, of actions.
Of actions in stage two.
We'll do this one and that one.
Yes, but we had to do everything in stage two, so.
And I, and I think the big one that, that, if I recall correctly, the big one that the board had a concern with was the daylight watering. And so we could bump that down to stage three and come up with something else on, on stage two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that because the rest of them are more...
Watering in the daytime?
Yeah. The, the other one was reducing the outdoor water budget by ten percent, and, you know, having, being over the billing department, I can tell you that that's really...
That was the other, that was the other.
Problematic. The, the drought penalties worked out really well. It was quick to administer, you know, it was really effective. And, but, so there are definitely some changes that I would have in here too. Um, and taking into account the board's concerns at that time, so, yeah.
That's good. That's all good.
That should be coming to the board, I believe, in the spring, spring.
Okay, all right. So if we could, my, my, my suggestion is remove these water waste and penalties over to that discussion and kind of get this through the, get this through the process.
Yeah, I like that too.
I'll just comment on that real quick. So Appendix F, uh, was existing in the ordinance because there was a penalty section for violations of this specific ordinance. Um, but we can update that back to what it was, or, um, so they'll still be in Appendix F, but it'll be specific to violations of this ordinance. Is there more? Oh, reporting. So we're updating, clarifying the reporting requirements. This has been required by the state since twenty fifteen, but it was not included in the model ordinance. Um, so that's being added, and, um, we're trying to clarify it. And we, we spoke with local cities about this and, and the importance of it, um, just to complete this annual M W O reporting. I believe this is gonna be really important going forward, uh, to meet the state water use objective and account for new development. So this report is generally just how many new building units were put in, you know, like the quantity and things, and how much landscape. So, um, we, like, if it's a large subdivision, we may approve five different plans for those models and lots, but, um, don't necessarily know how many were finalized in that, in that building year.
So, this, this doesn't fall on us. This is not reporting for us.
No, we s-, right. We submit something to the state, but this is really a requirement for the cities to submit the more accurate numbers. And it's gonna be important on our end that they do so, so that, um, our water use objective calculation includes all that new development. How the state calculates what our budget is.
Which would, which, which would increase it.
Yeah. Yes, it should increase it because of these new, new buildings.
Then you'll have a lower use per, per capita, maybe, and all that. You, you get better numbers, otherwise you, you look like you're using too much water.
Right. They may be going off popu-, or building numbers from five years ago. Because they're not updating the aerial imagery that often. I mean, the aerial imagery is from twenty nineteen, I think, and I don't know exactly when they're planning to update that. So this is, I believe, how, how those updated figures are gonna be included in our calculation.
Do you think we'll, we'll ever do something, I know we do the crop survey, you know, where we might do some aerial imagery to try to come up with canal water usage or things like that? And you think we're ever gonna get to a point where we do some type of similar thing for, as we try to get, we try to hit these, uh, targets on potable use, and we wanna make sure that we're accounting for all the tracks and all that? Are we there yet, or are we ever gonna go there?
Um, so the state, the state was required to provide us their, their data, um, from that flyover of residential um, back in twenty nineteen, I believe, or twenty twenty. Um, and then they weren't required to do so, but they are going to provide, um, in the spring, um, mapping and calculations for the C I I. And, um, so that's, uh, they're gonna provide that. They've kind of said, take a close look at it, because they're not guaranteeing any amount of accuracy to it.
What is C I I?
Uh, commercials.
Yeah, commercial industrial institution.
Yeah. And HOAs. So they're gonna provide, um, this mapping with the, of those property types based on like parcel information and whatnot. And that's where they've said they're gonna try to give an initial calculation of N F T. And that data they provide to us is, uh, supposed to include, um, some classification of functional and non-functional turf. Non-functional turf.
Okay.
And so it'll be on us to go through that data, verify its accuracy, try to figure out how much, I mean, because how much of that turf or irrigated area that they're providing is domestic versus non-potable versus well canal. So that'll be on our staff to kind of come through and, and clarify that number. It's a requirement of the state, of the water use objective for us to map and calculate that. And so they're trying to provide that help to give us kind of a, a first step.
When are you expecting to get that map?
Spring.
Of, uh...
This, this upcoming, spring twenty-six. I think originally, so the state, um, on D W R's webpage, they have it outlined somewhere with a table. Um, they're doing it, issuing it kind of by regions, and I think ours is, our region has been pushed back to the coming spring. Initially, they thought by now, but...
Okay.
You know, could I say something? That was part of the Making Conservation a Way of Life regulations, that which CBWD was heavily engaged in. We were on committees, we participated, we provided numerous public comments opposing that structure, because, I mean, it's a tremendous amount of work for the state to do a flyover and then expect us to go through every part... and then expect us to go through every parcel and look parcel by parcel to, I mean, I think there were, we had to look at like six, or we had changes to like thousands of parcels with our initial residential data. So we would prefer not to have the, this to implement. But unfortunately, that's what we're trying to meet. Um, I just wanted to say that we, you know, we were actively engaged in, in opposing that regulation and we actually had it considerably, um, modified to our benefit throughout the process.
All right, um, I think we have about like ten minutes to wrap up, so.
Yeah. Um, non-functional turf, I think we spoke to that. Uh, just real quick, wanna highlight kind of the outreach and that we did leading up to this. So we began this process back in July of twenty twenty-four, um, internally to kind of identify all the areas of the ordinance that may need to be updated. Uh, we hosted and facilitated a workshop back in March with local cities and water agencies um, to kind of go over what we were thinking. As I mentioned, as of twenty fifteen, a lot of the local cities and agencies adopted this ordinance as their ordinance. Um, so we wanted to give them an opportunity to provide input. Presented at the C VAG Energy and Sustainability Committee back in May. Also provided the proposed red lines to DVBA for review and com- comment and received the letter of support back in April. The Southern California Golf Association also reviewed it and we presented this at the C V, Coachella Valley Golf and Water Task Force and, uh, received some comment, uh, from them as well. And there was a matrix attached to the couple of comments we did receive and how we addressed those. And that's it.
Great. Any other questions, closing comments?
Yeah, I was just wondering, um, you know, if the HOAs or the, uh, development community was, was fine with the, uh, controllers. That I, I know you've kind of redefined what the, you know, smart controllers, the definitions, what they look like and the requirement that they are, uh, uh, E T weather-based, that actually control, uh, the system. And I'm kind of wondering if, did you get any feedback as, as if that was, uh, uh, too, uh, too complicated, too technical, too expensive or hampering ways that people do business, um, in there? I don't know if you've talked to, um, I, I see you talk to the DVBA and C VAG, but I don't see a lot of like HOAs or landscapers on that list.
Yeah, no, not outside of DVBA. Um, I believe that's, that's been a requirement of the ordinance since two thousand nine. I think it's just the definition of it is being updated. We also have that requirement for our, uh, large landscape turf conversion that they're required, when they do that, to also install a smart controller, um, that is weather-based. And so. And we have a rebate for it.
Any other final thoughts? No? No? All right, um, what's, what's, oh, John, your own?
Yeah.
Any other thoughts?
You still there? Yeah, yeah, no, I'm listening. I'm here. I'm fine with what you're doing.
Okay, cool, um, so what's, just for clarification, what, what's the next step here? To bring this back for approval, but by when?
Uh, there's no set required date, so probably, um, as soon as we can, they'll just get it updated and have those terms and definitions aligned in those other updates.
You think before the end of the year or next year or?
Probably before the end of this year.
Okay. All right, well, with that, um, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.